Today is Tuesday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. I call the village board meeting in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zanuck.
Here.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prackno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Tonight we have the invocation from Pastor Nogata from the Village Point Church, and we're going to do a pledge allegiance. Everyone please rise. Pastor, if you would, please.
Father, thank you so much for tonight. We come to you knowing that you are a heavenly father, a father who cares for us, and we treasure your name as holy, and we pray that your will will be done on earth as it is in heaven, your will that is perfect and pleasant. And God, we pray that we will see even in the times that we're living in, where we don't have all the answers, when it's so sometimes we see so much brokenness and chaos. We come to you trusting that you are good and that you're still in control of all things, and that you have a plan that we don't fully see it today that is unfolding. So I pray that we would trust you with our lives and trusting that you are in the midst of what we are seeing. I pray for protection for us, for our for everyone in this room, for our families, for our village, for our city, for our nation, for this world. We pray that you would bring healing and that you would bring this whole pandemic to pass and to seize. And so for tonight, I pray specifically for Mayor Johnson, for the leadership and for the meeting tonight. May you help bring clarity and peace in everything that is going to be discussed. And we honor you for who you are, and we trust you that you are a father who is good. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Flags to my right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Pastor, hang on. Thank you for coming today, and I think now more than ever, you're right. We need the power of the Lord with us and support and strength and bringing the community together. And I thank you. I know your church, as many are, being innovative ways to safely bring people together, and I think that's so important. So I want to thank you for coming tonight, spreading the word. And there's no I've got here two packets of the Village chocolates. Thank you.
My kids have been waiting for this.
That's all you wanted. Thank you very much. Take care. Okay, move on to approval of the minutes of September eighth, two thousand and twenty.
I move we approve the minutes of September eighth, two thousand and twenty, in defense with the ready.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zanuck, a second by trustee Listner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you an ass approval. Move on to mayor and board of trustees report. Now that we're doing meetings twice a month back our old schedule, my number drops significantly. So for the first time since I think February, we have a normal length mayor's report. So Mr. Nigobacher, you can stay awake this time. Try. Okay. Couple of items going on. First off, on September tenth, I did a taping with the USA Wrestling Federation and one with USA Track and Field. They're doing a joint announcement preparation, where they use them for commercials, others like that. Getting ready for our sponsorship of USA Track and Field, USA Wrestling, USA Triathlon coming up. There's a prepare for the Olympics coming up. And so it was great to work with them. They're excited about partnering with us, talked about it, there are people. And looking forward to seeing when all that comes out. The same day, I also had a Zoom meeting, my first ever Zoom meeting with the Girl Scouts Unit four oh six. Thank Lori for setting everything up so I didn't mess it up too bad. And I learned how to push a mute button, so that was good. But they work on the democracy badges, and it was great to talk to them. You know, normally these girls come in. Like the scouts come in, we have meetings, all that. And I felt bad because I couldn't get our chocolates, because they weren't here with us. So but it was nice to do that, and we had a chance to meet with, talk to them, and I think they really enjoyed it and everything going on. Heads up, heads up, heads up. Come November, trying to think, November fourth, I believe, the last new runway opens up at O'Hare.
Yeah.
As everyone remembers, for many, 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 many years, back to Mayor Zanuck's day in the eighties, you know, we're trying to protect this community's quality of life and things from the expansion of O'Hare, and obviously we fought to the end, but we weren't successful. And that new last runway, the long one they're putting in, and they extended the other one. They're opening up on early part of November. So we've been warning people, letting them know there's going to be a lot of noise coming, especially down Devon Avenue. That lines up with it. So be prepared. Just like, I know people live up by Beastville Road, especially on the west side of the village, now used that runway. They'd opened up the northern runway a few years ago. Same thing's going to happen here. And this is the long one. The northern one's a short one. You get a lot of smaller jets. The long one is the big boys. So it's going to be coming. Heads up to that. Luckily, it starts in winter, when we have windows closed, won't be so bad. We are still, I'm still the chairman of suburban air commission. We're still working the city of Chicago on nighttime flight rotations. They had another meeting today. That is the one where we try to minimize the impact of the airport from eleven o'clock to six AM every night. We do rotations. So one week we may have impact, then we get a week or two, it's no impact. We're rotating around the airport. We've already agreed now that when it's on the south part of the airport, all flights stay south. On the north part, which is us, all stay north. We don't try mixing between both. So if you're on the north when it's going south, you truly get a relief on the north side. When it's on the north side, the south side truly gets relief. So we are working on it. We had quite a still discussion going on with Mr. Romo, and where's Maggie? Maggie, on the diagonal ones. We want to make sure they stay in the loop, which they should. We've always said, everyone benefits from the airport, everyone gets the detrimental side of the airport. No one should get all the negative impact. So we've been working hard on that. We still have our consortium together. We're doing very well. And to Chicago's credit, they have been very cooperative working with the towns around the airport, something we did not see before, but we are seeing now. So heads up, in a month and a half, be prepared, that new runway will be opening up. Also, to our police, nice job over Labor Day, Chief Walsh. I see clicking a ticket over Labor Day. Did very well. Remember, that's a program put on by the state of Illinois. They reimburse you, am I correct, chief? They reimburse the village for doing it. We had thirteen daytime enforcement zones, twelve nighttime. There are six hundred and sixty-three traffic stops. This still blows me away. Five hundred and twenty-six seatbelt violations. One felony arrest, one arrest on a current warrant, two suspended drivers, three unlicensed drivers, three uninsured drivers. Twenty-five speed. How does someone get a speeding ticket with you guys all out there beyond me on that? Twelve us hazardous moving violation, and a number I still think is way too low, seventy cellphone violations. I think I can see seventy driving from my house to my office on Higgins, just in that time. But we appreciate you working on that, chief. Good job. And the bad thing is, on those seatbelt, there's still two child seat violations. That is unacceptable, folks. You get those little ones in there, they deserve all the protection they should get. Also, anyone that's looked at the newspaper lately, I'm sure I'm going to goof up his name, I apologize. Igor Calici actually graduated from Elk Grove High School in two thousand and eight. He invented a passing machine. I don't know if anyone saw that in the paper. Young man invented a passing machine with a fellow friend of his from college at Northwestern University. Anyone that's been around football, I coached it years ago when I was teaching at Wheeling. You know, you had the old passing machines for the football, the practical guys. They came up with a new state-of-the-art one that is just doing gangbusters right now. It's great to see a local Elk Grove guy do something good like that. And, you know, nice to see him get some incentive. And I mean, the pros are using this machine. Especially now with COVID, it gives a chance for all these guys, when they're off seat, when they're not practicing with the team, to practice their catching and all that. The Bears guys could use a little bit of that machine, maybe. So you may want to help pitch in and get them on for the receivers.
Is there one to help quarterbacks?
Huh?
Is there one to help quarterbacks?
Yeah. Good luck on that one, yeah. And not bad, sixty-three thousand dollars, so, you know. But it's great to see that, and great to see a local young man do well. We're very proud of him and what he's done. And that came from Elk Grove High School. So if people talk about our schools not doing a good job educating kids, here's a guy that always got well-educated from Elk Grove and did a great job. So that was great to see that. Mr. Paul Petzel out there. Mr. Petzel, last Thursday, gave us a call to thank us for the job. They're doing your drainage in the backyard on Dover. Did a great job. And Mr. Petzel, I know how great the guys are doing. Polite, clean, good work. Thank you for calling, Paul. And what kind of job would you say they did, Paul?
Excellent.
What do you think, Mr. Nigobacher?
That was excellent.
That was good to hear. So thank you, Paul, for that. Also, remind people, briefly here, during this pandemic time, we all know unfortunately addiction is up, whether it's opioids, alcohol, you know, other addictions. They're up. Elk Grove Cares Program is going strong as ever. We just got a big state grant to help us for funding. So again, if you have an addiction problem, you reach out to the village. Come in, we'll go get you. If you got drugs, alcohol on you, we take them, we don't arrest you. We're not here to do that. We're here to help get help. Then we will put you, we stay with you, and we get you into a rehab center. We take you there. And then we stay with you, we follow up, we stay in touch with you, we keep working with you. It's tough times now, but we've got a way to help you. So please, anyone, if you need help, you want to talk to someone, call our police department. We're here to help you. No questions asked, and we'll get you the help you need. We are here for you. So please remember, Elk Grove Cares is here for you, and we can do it. If you don't have insurance, we'll pay for it. We cover it. So we're going to get you the help you need. So please, don't hesitate to reach out to us, especially at this time. Next, Makers Wanted. Mr. Nigobacher, we're in the Pelpin today. Our Makers Wanted ad campaign with the Bahamas Bowl, the Bahama Bowl Makers Wanted is in line, it's one of the finalists for a national recognition for advertising excellence. The hashtag sports awards will be announced next month. This year, it's going to be done, what do they call it, virtually?
Virtually.
Virtually, because of pandemic, it's out in New York. And we are in the category of most creative sponsorship. In other words, thinking outside the box, unique way. We are nominated for that. And we are nominated because, one, is they're able to track the value. Makers Wanted Bahamas Bowl generated nine point eight million dollars in media exposure value. The sponsorship also on national, international media coverage. And if you remember, matter of fact, on Monday, the twenty-eighth of September, Love's Fueling Station is coming in for one final adjustment from IDOT, and they'll get all the permits ready then to start building. Remember, Love's Fueling Station came to Elk Grove Village, as Chad Bruner said, for one reason, he was watching the bowl game. Checked up on Elk Grove, came out here with his boss, found a spot, and they're going to be building soon. Remember, Love's Fueling Station is going to generate over twenty million dollars in tax revenue for this village during the life of the lease of that piece of land at Pratt and Bussie. So obviously, it's outside the box thinking, it's creative, and we're one of the five finalists. Tom, we have a press release for you on this. And to show you kind of class we're in, our competition, one is the NFL Twitter Super Bowl confetti, two thousand and twenty. The other one, we're going against the Chicago Bears for one of their ad campaigns. So we're going against some big league players. You're going against Superbowl, Mr. Nigobacher. You're going against the big boys. So very honored for one of the finalists, and that's for the Makers Wanted Bahamas Bowl sponsorship. So we're excited about that, and hopefully by the end of October, we're going to be able to let you know how that turned out. Next, for all the young people out there, and us old people that still enjoy it, trick-or-treating will go on in Elk Grove Village this year. I'll say it again. Elk Grove Village will have trick-or-treating this year. How it's going to work is this. We're going to have, for this year and this year only, it's a Saturday holiday, we're going to have our hours reduced down from three PM to seven PM. Normally, we're one to eight PM. The reason we do that is, we do one PM for the mothers of the young kids, for the other kids get out of school, and we go to eight PM for the parents that work till six, six-thirty, to have time to take kids out. On Saturday, that shouldn't be a problem. So from three to seven PM, you will be able to trick-or-treat here in Elk Grove. However, couple of guidelines, because we do want to be safe for everybody involved. One, all trick-or-treaters and those that are accompanying the trick-or-treaters need to wear, have to wear, a face mask. A mask of some kind over the face to protect. So parents of the little ones need to wear them, even though they might not be trick-or-treating. The trick-or-treaters need to wear them. So they have to. Four, the households that are going to allow trick-or-treaters to come, we strongly, 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 strongly encourage them to wear a mask and hopefully gloves. We also ask that all your candy or treats you give out are obviously sealed and wrapped. We ask when the kids come to your door, do not let the kids take the candy out of the bowl. We ask the homeowner to take the candy and place it in each one of the kids' bag or bucket, whatever they have. Now, we understand that some people are nervous about people coming to the house with COVID and all the rest. We respect that. So we will be sending out in our October newsletter, it'll come out like the second week of October, an insert that you will take out. If you want trick-or-treaters to come to your house, if you want to welcome them, you put this green sign, this is the size, you put this in your front door. It says on there, trick-or-treaters welcome, face covering required for candy. So if you don't have your face covering on, they won't give you your candy, kids. So make sure you have it on. But this tells them that you welcome them to come to your house. If you do not want a trick-or-treater to come to your house, which is understandable, the other side is red and says, no trick-or-treaters, please. Have a safe and happy Halloween. See you next year. So if you want them not to come to your house, because by having your lights on and off, it's daylight on Saturday, pretty much for the whole trick-or-treating, these signs will work better. You put up the red one, I'm telling the young people trick-or-treating, or whoever's trick-or-treating, you see this sign, nicely just go on to the next house. You see the green side, you're welcome to go up the house, knock on the door, ring the doorbell, and you get your candy, and you can say trick-or-treat. We're also asking groups of trick-or-treaters, if there's a group already at the front door, stay off the front porch, stand back, wait till they step away, then your group can go on up. So we're protecting everyone with face coverings. We're protecting everyone with wrapped candy, sealed candy. We're protecting everyone that does not want a trick-or-treater, just put up the red sign, they'll pass you by. If you want them, welcome them, put up the green sign. But trick-or-treating will take place in Elk Grove Village. So it will go on. We're getting this village back to more normalcy in a safe way. So this is well looked at, talked to some medical people, talked to legal, everything. We're doing everything exactly the way it can be done safely. We can enjoy the holiday. Now, for us adults that have parties that night, and Halloween night is a big party night, we're reminding everyone, if you're having a get-together, please practice safe measures in your house if you have people over. Please. Okay? So we're asking the adults to also do their job on that. So trick-or-treating is coming to Elk Grove. It's going to be here on Halloween. We will put this out in our newsletter, obviously, with the thing. We'll put it on our website, we'll put it on Channel Six, we'll do blast out. I'll do a robo-call as we get closer. If for some reason you don't get this, we'll have it on our line, on our email address. You can download it. Or we will mail you one. We'll get, you can come pick one up. We'll have extra. And that's why you should get your newsletter the second week of October. If you don't have it, that's still two to three weeks from Halloween. You let us know, we'll make sure you get the sign. But after last year getting six inches of snow, which kind of put a little damper on Halloween, we think it's important that we do it. Also, not quite ready to let you know, but the next event after Halloween is our tree lighting. Stay tuned. As you know, Elk Grove always finds a way to get things done. Those folks that like to kick off the holiday season, have faith. We'll be talking about that in the very near future. So we're getting a little bit back to normalcy, enjoying holidays, family time together. Do it safely, but it can be done. Real quick, leaf pickup. As everyone knows, our newsletter that just came out, are coming out. They made a little mistake in the leaf pickup area. It's got the right date on your zone, it's got the wrong day next to it. So it might be October eighth, it might say October eighth, Monday, when it really should be October eighth, Tuesday. So don't go by the day, go by the date. That is correct. Am I right, Maggie? I apologize for the mix-up. It shouldn't have happened. We're going to put out another one in October newsletter, but in the meantime, pick-ups start already. So in October, so go by the date in there, not the day listed. So we get that. Last but not least, on our agenda tonight is the issue awarding a contract for the removal of the old Phoenix Club on Higgins Road. Before that, when I grew up, I was a beef and barrel as a kid. I was hunters in between. That's coming down. I know a lot of people seem to misunderstand the real world sometimes, but please remember how the Phoenix Club came about. The village buying the property was, it was first bought by a gentleman, probably about two, three years ago. He approached the village about changing the venue there, and we looked at it, and we were comfortable with it, but then he and his partners decided not to do it. He closed down, the previous owner closed that down probably about a year, year and a half ago. Long before the village even got involved in anything. And he had once sold it to a neighboring property owner. Problem with that, he reached out, his representatives reached out to the village recently, a few months ago, asking if we were interested in it. We said yes. We struck a deal, we bought that, I think it's closed in June, and now it's being torn down. So as you hear things, see things, read things, don't believe what you see, hear, and read. The village did not throw the Phoenix Club out. We had nothing against the people that were patronizing the location. If we owned it and it was still operational, it would still have been operational. But remember, the reason the previous owner did it was, there was a lot of issues with the building, it was not updated, code violations, a lot of issues going on there. So he made a decision to close it, not us. So don't believe everything you read, don't believe everything you see. Again, you got people out there, I don't want to use the term, but fake news. So it's unfortunate. So with that said, I believe that's everything. Pretty quick, Mr. Frankie?
Very good.
Thank you. We move on to trustee's report. We'll start with trustee Listner.
Thank you, mayor. I was thinking about tonight's report, and you brought up an interesting point with starting off the holidays. Well, we've been lucky enough at our home to have our daughter and son-in-law and their puppy staying with us, because they sold their house and entered the town, and they're going to be with us until their new home is ready. So in the meantime, the other night, they took their dog out for a walk. And as they walked through quite a while, they were out. But when they came back, they said, the people in Elk Grove are so much friendlier than the town they came from. I won't mention the town. But they said, so many people said hi to them, people they didn't even know. And they said, it's amazing what a town we have. And I think we all knew that, but I just wanted to mention it to the board and reinforce that.
Would it be potentially a town just to the west of us? Would it be potentially a town just to the west of us?
It could be.
Okay. We won't say Schaumburg, but, oh, go ahead, trustee listener. Anything else?
Nothing.
Well, thank you. Well, I mean, we sometimes take it granted, what kind of town we have, we really do. And, you know, it's nice to hear, like I said, I talk about those aldermen, the couple, they offered on, with the husband four, eight years, and the wife for eight years. Talk all the time, when they go underneath that 90, and they come down Oakton, go on 90, come into Elk Grove, they always talk about how beautiful it is once they come into Elk Grove. And so, that makes you feel good, thank you, that makes you feel very good, thanks, trustee Lister. Elk Grove all should be proud about that. Trustee Prakno.
Just wanted to report, just reminded that we still have the farmer's market every Saturday morning from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the village hall parking lot. The farmer's market will be going till Saturday, October 24th. There's still lots of wonderful produce, floral, meats, vegetables, bakery. The market is picking up, we have more, they have more vendors now than they had at the beginning of the season. So, please come out and support our local produce people. And that's again, every Saturday morning from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM out here in the parking lot. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, when you were talking about O'Hare expansion and the runway, I don't know if you're aware, but there was a story on Fox News last night, I believe it was last night or Sunday night, that they may be having financial issues again, and they may not have enough money for the expansion, but Chicago was denying that report, but Fox News did report that.
Really?
Yes.
Well, with the airline travel, they're counting on passenger fees. You know, they get passengers, surcharge fees, and with the passengers so low, they gotta pay those bonds they went out for. And they just put another, what, eight billion they're putting in for that people mover, the new terminals and all that.
Terminal fighter, talking about, they said the project's gonna go through 2028 now.
How long?
2028.
Remember, they first started this expansion, remember John Giles, Mayor of Binsville, and I downtown? Richie Day, they made their first announcement in 2001.
Right.
And here we are, almost 30 years later.
Yes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. Move on now to trustee Zarnik, CZ.
No report.
No S. No S. And the name?
No N. They always put a C.
CK at the end.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No report.
No, but trustee Feiter.
Yes, the Community Character Coalition is going to sponsor a food drop-off on October 3rd between 10 o'clock in the morning, 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Our membership will be there for that. The drop-off locations, there're gonna be two of them. One at the township headquarters, which is right across from the post office, you can't miss it. And the others, the District 59 administrative offices. So, those will be the two locations. It'll be 10 to 1, Community Character Coalition sponsors it. And I just say that I've noticed that there are a number of groups that are running food drives now. I see one of our local realtors are doing that, the village employees are doing it. A lot of different churches are doing it, and it's really kind of an impressive thing that we see going on in Elk Grove Village. But it also reflects the fact that there is need, and we wouldn't be doing all these food-raising events if there wasn't a need. And certainly, there is with the people that are out of work and problems that people are having with the pandemic that we're going through. So, please try to remember, that's a Saturday, October 3rd, the township or District 59. When you come by, just open up your trunk, our volunteers will grab whatever's in there, and that'll do it. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Trustee Frankie.
You had a wonderful report today, thank you for being short. That's all I have.
Poor Mr. Nick, I couldn't even get a nap yet. I took away your nighttime nap, sorry. Okay, move on now to accounts payable warrant for September 22nd, 2020.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for September 22nd, 2020 in the amount of $1,270,970.63.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Lister. Lori, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Lister?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
That was quite emphatic eye there.
I didn't realize I was that close.
The motion passes six to nothing. Tonight, you're winning some history.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, trustee Zarnik, you're now our senior member. I don't remember that short of an agenda, was it A, B, C, D, five items?
I don't remember it either.
See, I used my fingers when I did it, so.
Thank God, there weren't 15.
Not this short, no.
And it wasn't about three months ago, we had the longest. We were like double D or double F or something like that, so. Okay, so, I need a motion to approve, consider agenda items, A as an apple, through E as an excellent.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lister, second by trustee Frankie. Any questions, counsel, any board members on considering agenda? Any staff members, audience members on the agenda items? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, record the vote as previously demonstrated, five, or six to nothing, five items, sorry, six to nothing. We do have here, bear with me, no items on the regular agenda. Mr. Romo, Plan Commission, no items?
Good evening, Mayor, word to trustees, there are no items under the Plan Commission portion of the agenda this evening. However, there are two items under the Zoning Board of Appeals portion of the agenda this evening. The first one is a replacement fence at 501 Stonehaven. The Zoning Board of Appeals heard the request from the homeowner, and they voted five to zero to recommend that the village board grant a variation for the replacement fence. I do believe the homeowners are in the audience, should you have any questions to them?
Okay. What was your answer by the zoning board? Residents, in the back, any questions for them, any concerns? If not, I need a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents?
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Lister, second by trustee Zarnik. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show the answer approval. Folks, you're okay now. In three weeks, our next meeting, we will formally adopt the approval. You do not need to come back, and you do not need to work. If you wanna go ahead and start, while we still have some nice weather left, doing the fence work, you got our permission to start now. Mary Jo Pie of her engineering department, just go down there, get your permit, they'll approve it now, and you're set to go. We wanna thank you for working with the zoning board and work with the community, getting this done. We thank you for reinvesting in your place for the community. And I know exactly where, I was saying, where you guys are at, and that'd be nice what you're doing, that'd be a good addition there. So, you're good to go, you're set, and we thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Romo, the next one?
Mayor, Board of Trustees, you do have one more item under the Zoning Board portion of the agenda, and that pertains to a request at 610 Hudson Court to replace a fence. Specifically, the petitioner is seeking to install a four-foot-high, open-type fence, which will extend to the street-side property line along Beisterfield Road. The fence will replace an existing four-foot-high split rail fence in the same location. The Zoning Board of Appeals did hear the petitioner's request. They accepted input from many of the neighbors. As I recall, they received input from five neighbors, four of whom were supportive, and one of whom had some objections. And following that entire hearing process, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended by a vote of five to zero that the village board grant the variation. And I do believe the homeowner is here this evening, should you have any questions?
The petitioner? Oh, thank you. Is anybody here that were, I know one neighbor was objectable, is that neighbor here tonight? Okay. If board members remember, we gotta send out a copy of all that to everyone, so everyone had a chance to review it and all see it and all that. Again, Zoning Board approves unanimously. Does the board have any questions for the resident or issues? If not, I need a motion to prepare, have attorney prepare necessary documents for approval.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Feiter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show the answer approval. For you also, you have a permission to go ahead and start at any time you want to. You do not need to return in three weeks for the next meeting. It'll be formally adopted, but since it was approved by the Zoning Board unanimous, and by this board tonight unanimous, no need to return, it'll be a mere formality. Again, work with Ms. Pie's department, get your permits, and we thank you too for reinvesting in the village, being part. Also, saw the landscaping that, you did, it was a nice improvement, thank you, that looked very nice what you did.
Beautiful yard, beautiful.
Did a nice job, so thank you. So, you're good to go too, and again, thank you for reinvesting in Elk Grove, we appreciate it.
Of course, thank you, guys.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Romo?
That was it this evening.
You sat close this time, made it easier. Okay. Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I would just like to thank Robert Stanislavski, Stanislavski, I guess. He is one of the winners of our $1,000 scholarships, and it's very rare, but we got, the Youth Committee got a thank you card.
You never got those, did you?
No, really, no.
We always get them.
Really? Well, thank you, Robert, and I'm glad we could help out. He's, he said the money came in, helped him a lot, so I'm glad we could do this and look forward to helping kids next year. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind for a sec. Folks, they're here for, you do not, if you wanna stay, you're welcome to, but you don't have to. You can leave if you, you know, it's up to you what you wanna do. So, just wanna let you know.
I was gonna ask you right away.
I did that before trustee listener's report. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Samuel Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as usual, we've been very busy. We visited a couple businesses in the last week. One was Country Indian Suites over at Devon and Rowling, and it's a very nice business. Unfortunately, they bought it in March, I believe, which wasn't the best time to buy a hotel. But they have some great ideas and great plans, and they own some other properties, so they're hanging in there, and it's, they have some very nice rooms, and I think with the upgrades planned, they should be doing well soon as we're beyond this pandemic. Yesterday, we visited Frank Cooney, they're distributors of education furnishings. And God, they make some great furniture, or they don't make it, but they distribute it. We were sitting on it, and it's, I could see why kids wanna get back to school. This stuff is much more comfortable than you have around your typical, typical home. And we did visit this company back in June, I believe, but it was one of the virtual visits. And they, they're nice, but they're just not as nice at being there, meeting the people, and talking to them, asking questions. And we have a lot of them coming up. In fact, Nick Radcliffe, who works with Josh, has been scheduling these things like mad. Tomorrow, we got Dexter Magnetic. They make magnetic modules for a variety of different equipment in medical, in aerospace, and it'll be interesting to see them. On the 28th, we're visiting Merx, M-E-R-X Global. They're a freight forwarder and deliver, delivery system. On September 30th, Maracapo Pizza, who I never heard of, but we're looking forward to that one naturally. They manufacture for a lot of other private labels, so it may be pizza I've already eaten. And let's see, on the 5th of October, we're visiting Old Castle Building Envelope. They make interior and exterior sightings for buildings. You see these glasses, glass buildings. We have a couple companies like that in Elk Grove, but this one looks like it's a very nice company. On October 6th is Black Box, they make networking services, or provide networking services. On October 14th is White Racker, they make commercial plumbing products. And the last one so far is, on October 19th, we're visiting Zipde, Zipde, Z-I-P-D-E-E. Believe it or not, they make awnings. So, we have a lot of things coming up. And in between, we had a virtual meeting with several of our business members, part of the Business Leaders Forum. And Ray Romo, our village manager, organized this through Josh Grozdin, and Josh did a great job putting it together. And I've been talking about this as I've been getting lost, going on Bussy Road, trying to find some of our side streets, 'cause the street signs are sort of, sort of back. So, the agreement is, and I hope the board and everyone else will approve this, but Kobe Basham and his team did a great job. There's signs out there now. One set is at Tui and Bussy, and the other set is at Arthur and Bussy. And they, they say the name of the upcoming street, say like Arthur, and it'll also give you the range of addresses, going from Bussy to the east, or Bussy to the west, depending. And they're, they're very nice. Josh said he was gonna get me a copy, he was gonna try to get me a copy of the signs to show you tonight. And he hit them so well, I can't find them, so we'll have to show it to you during the week, soon as I find them, with Josh. So, I think they're gonna help our truck drivers too, especially the ones that come over the road, because it's tough looking for those streets and watching for cars.
Well, part of the problem too is, Kobe, is trees are blocking those signs so much. You know, I started riding more this year again, and you don't see until you're almost on top of that street, because the lights are back off the corner, and the signs are, so by doing that, that's gonna help a lot, because you really don't see the signs until you almost pass the intersection. So, that's great.
And you just don't go around the block.
No, you got a long way to get back.
Go around the block to Elmer's Road, and man.
That's great, I'm glad to hear that, because I was just thinking about that today, so, good timing.
Well, I've been trying for this for a long time, but someone prior to Kobe had some issues with this, but.
Well, I'm glad you're changing it.
Kobe came along at the right time, and so we're looking forward to that. And lastly, let me just tell you a couple things happening at Enclave. Yesterday, they had the eighth of the 10 workers workshops, the Makers Wanted workshops. There's two more to go. In fact, the next one will be on October 13th, and the last one will be November something. And also, Thursday, there's a watch party. Enclave is getting a well-deserved award from the Daily Herald Business Ledger as one of the Entrepreneurial Excellent Awards for 2020. And John Dallas and the other people involved definitely deserve it. They're doing a great job, and they're making Elk Grove notable for that, for having them. And their next masterclass is, the subject is making a point, and the feature is Leslie Munger. I don't know if you remember her, but she used to be the deputy governor, or ran for deputy governor, and, or maybe she was deputy governor.
Yeah, she was under Rauner.
Rauner, yeah. So, she's gonna be the speaker. Her husband goes to a lot of the meetings, he's an attorney, and, yeah, a very, very nice man. And I think that's pretty much it, and there's some more workshop. Oh, there is something in December. Someone named Mayor Craig B. Johnson will be at Enclave, giving the graduating class some special words. So, thank you, Mayor. And that concludes my report. I think.
Okay. Very good. Don't complain about me, trustee Frankie, ever again.
I'm not anymore.
Ever again. Gable Intelligence Committee, trustee Lister.
Oh, God.
Okay, let me make up for it, no report.
No report?
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Information Committee, trustee Lister.
Uh-oh.
I did have one, Mr. Mayor, but you covered it, so no report.
What was that?
The one on the dates and the days, in case you'd have mentioned it.
Okay. We move on now to Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
Trustee Zarnik's timing me on this, but.
Okay.
I have a few things that are kind of important. We had a very successful paint and oil recycling event, I think it was 650 cars. I went by there, and everything was going so well, they just flowed through, there was a little backup at the very beginning, but that worked out. The entire crew that worked in there, and Maggie Jablonsky, who organized it, the police, the public works, everybody again did a great job. And what Maggie had said to me was that we have now found the right formula for a successful recycling event. This seems to be the workable way, and, and that is really good. I'm glad to hear that people like these events, they're very useful to have, and I'm hoping to get a report sometime in the future about how many gallons of paint and oil that were turned in. One other item is the new program we have of simple recycling, which is really textile recycling. And that event, I didn't think that was gonna really get going so fast, but I understand 100 people had bags out in front of their houses on their garbage day last week. We collected 12,745 pounds. We collected twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-five pounds. And remember on that, it's very important to put this out on the day you have your garbage pickup. So you all receive bags at home, you fill it up, put it on your garbage day, and don't put it next to your garbage cans, move it a little bit away. And then I saw the truck myself last week, going out around the neighborhoods, picking up these bags. And I was really amazed, I didn't know that it would catch on this fast, that those many people would do that. And I think I'm going to have a bag at my house for next week, this Friday, when we have our garbage pickup. So it's not a hard thing to do. Now, if you still want to give away things to Salvation Army, to Wings, to anything like that, certainly do so. No problem. But this is a way that if you have things at home that you wouldn't want to insult Salvation Army or Wings by giving it to them, old wrinkled, dirty rags, or clothing that's in bad shape, or anything like that, put them in that bag, put them outside, and they'll get them. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Trustee Feiter?
Trustee Listener?
You know, during the holiday week, your garbage is pushed back a day? And I should have asked this before the meeting, I'm sorry, but our garbage day becomes a Saturday. Will they still be picking it up on Saturdays as well as Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, thanks.
Thank you. And I'm impressed, trustee Feiter, between the two recycling events, over one thousand, five hundred cars went through between the two. That's impressive.
Very much so.
Very good, thank you. Your committee did a good job, thank you. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
No report.
Judiciary Planning Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
I got a report.
Uh-oh. We're on a roll.
This week began on various concrete repair to sidewalks, curbs, and entrance aprons around the village. Crews plan on starting this village-wide effort with the removal of concrete throughout the middle of the week and replacement prior to the weekend. It is anticipated this will take approximately four weeks to complete. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Airport update I already discussed, Midsummer Concert Classic Series. Mr. Knickerbocker, since it's ten months away, we open up with who on the Fourth of July next year?
Tautree.
Tautree. And our first band at Town Center, which would be, I got my dates messed up, I'm not sure what July date, but who would that be? You got it. Our third band, which is a fill-in for Bret Michaels, is?
Love it, boy.
Very good.
Don't look at me.
Why are you looking at him?
Why are you looking at me?
Not that there's anything wrong with it. So go ahead. And our last one?
That's good.
One of the ultimate bands? Pardon?
Beach Boys.
Beach Boys, you got it, buddy. So it'll be here before you know it. Special Events Committee, well, I'm calling trick-or-treating a special event this year. And be ready, our next one after that will be tree lighting. That's not gone, so that's all we're going to say. No items on the Liquor Commission, report from our beloved village manager, Mr. Romo.
I'm really worried.
And am I correct to still say not one village employee? Not one village employee, knock on wood, has gotten coronavirus. We've been doing a great job, and I commend you, your department heads, and everyone else for doing a great job with that. We're being very careful. Lori, any reports? Yes, you do, don't you?
Oh, well, I could go on all night long with the election, but early voting will be here at Village Hall beginning October nineteenth through November second. The hours are Monday through Friday from eight-thirty AM till seven PM, and on Saturday and Sunday, nine to five. And there will be a ballot drop box at the early voting site. So anybody who wishes to fill out a mail-in ballot can drop off the ballot at the drop box. It's a secure drop box by the judges, not at the village hall counters, but at the early voting site.
So they come in while the early voting's open?
Yep.
And they can put the ballot in the box and walk away? They don't have to vote then?
Right, the village employees are not authorized to accept the ballots, so we can't.
And we're doing social distancing?
Social distancing.
Clean, one door in, one door out, different door out. Okay.
Can I mark that question? I was reading the newspaper, is it true that if you request a mail-in ballot, and you choose to change your mind and vote in person, you must present that ballot when you go to vote in person? That's correct. Because if you apply for a mail-in ballot, it's my understanding, you're flagged in the system that a ballot was mailed to your house. So if you go to early voting and try and vote in a machine, the judge will see that a ballot was mailed to your house. So you have to physically bring that ballot to the judge, hand it to them, and they can void it out and then allow you access to the system. Thank you. And they dispose of it.
So, now I commend Illinois, you know, we sometimes have issues with Illinois, they're doing it the right way.
Yeah.
That's good, you know, because otherwise people can mail it in, plus then vote in person. It's going to be hard to coordinate and all that. I give Illinois credit for that. That's a job well done on that, so.
Well, some states are mailing them out to everyone, whether you want them or not.
Well, now, I think one state, Wisconsin, is, you can mail it up to two weeks after the election. So you won't know the winner until our election in April. So it's crazy. But that's good, I commend Illinois for doing that, that's very good.
Thank you.
For being safe. Okay, trustees, any new business ideas you want to bring up tonight? Look how quickly we are going to go back to normal.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Makes a point, doesn't it?
Impressive. So anybody in the audience wish to, October twenty-seventh, right? How's it going now that you're opening again, everything going good?
It's good, yeah, we're doing exercise every day. And our first current event is going to be in August, September, the young center, the Combinator.
So you kind of get to work through the kinks and all that, so are you getting more people, I mean, are people kind of anxious to get back?
Yeah, they're starting to get back.
Good, good. Well, I'm looking forward to on the twenty-seventh, to be there, update you on everything, there's a lot going on. So we'll get through it. And I won't invite trustee Listener, because we'd be there till dinnertime, so we'll hold off on that.
Is that the twenty-seventh of?
October.
Oh, October.
So.
I'm busy that weekend.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Petzel, thank you for being here as usual. You're looking good.
Thank you.
How did Mr. Knickerbocker do tonight?
A lot of times you ask him to prepare the next documents, and that's a lot of work.
Thankfully, he's got a mask on, so the way he mumbled out, I thought he said, "Why is George still here?" That's what I thought he said. I could have been wrong. Okay, with nothing else, no one else, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Feiter, second by trustee Listener. Lori, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Okay, motion adjourned, passes six to nothing. Folks, stay safe, enjoy this summer week, and we'll see you in three weeks, meeting adjourned.